You see it's 5:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. We have, it looks like a long agenda, but I'm not sure it's real long. The city licenses, you can see that are listed there. There's eight of them. And with that then, we'll move to the adoption of the consent agenda. Gentlemen.
I'm okay.
I'll make a motion. We adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. Then we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Items for commission action, by the way, when we get to the end of this part of it, we do have two executive sessions and we'll make the proper motions at those times. So items for commission action include, number A, consider rescinding the condemnation action for previously condemned structure at 2905 Regency Drive.
There's Don.
There's Don, right there.
He's walking in and out of the room, trying to confuse us.
Actually walked by that house the other day. Saturday and Sunday.
Yes. It's staff's recommendation that we rescind the condemnation on 205 Regency Drive. Looks really, really nice.
It does.
Inside and out, so.
Okay. And that's just what we want to see?
Yes.
And this was a fire, a house that was?
Yes, the master bedroom, master bathroom had significant fire damage to it. Yep.
Questions by the commission for Don?
No.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Entertained a motion then that we rescind the condemnation for the condemned structure at 2905 Regency Drive.
I make a motion. We rescind condemnation of 2905 Regency Drive.
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item B, consider approving an official statement on Montgomery County Action Council's efforts to recruit Tyson Foods. Craig?
Yeah, Mary. I'm sure you're all aware of the issue out there of a potential development. Trish Peronne from the Montgomery County Action Council's here to give a little update and maybe answer questions as far as possible.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah, absolutely. We recently found out that our submission for the Coffeyville site for the Tyson Food Processing Plant was selected as a top three candidate in the state of Kansas. At this time, it looks like those are the top three sites for Tyson for this new facility. It would encompass 1,600 jobs at the facility themselves, which would include a processing facility, a feed mill, and a hatchery. In addition, they expect to contract with about 100 to 150 different farmers in this region to help raise those chickens in about four to six poultry houses with about seven acres per group of poultry houses. So the range will be about 50 to 60 miles, ideally within 30, for those poultry houses to be spread out. There's a lot of information out there that we're slowly getting. At this stage where we're at, we are in the information gathering stage. We want to ask citizens questions, have them ask us questions, so that we can convey those questions onto Tyson, on to KDHE, Kansas Department of Ag, Commerce, Transportation, whoever is the most knowledgeable on that question that anyone might have. So that is the purpose of what MAC is doing right now. We'll have about two months to get to know Tyson and for them to get to know us, at which point we will have several discussions between now and the first of the year. I expect them to make a decision the first part of the year. So I guess some of the things that, you know, that we have heard, you know, there were concerns obviously about what their impact is economically, environmentally, housing, workforce. We, I want to assure everyone, we would not have submitted, Montgomery County would not have submitted, if we didn't meet every requirement that they had. Workforce within 60 miles of Coffeyville, we have 344 people working in that 60 mile radius.
344,000.
344,000 people working in that 60 mile radius of where the plant would be located. 5.7% was our unemployment rate for last month. I heard that went down this month. I haven't confirmed that yet. I haven't received the official Kansas Department of Labor report yet, but I've heard that's looking down. But every single county around us is up. So it's interesting to see where maybe they got jobs in Montgomery County and somebody else lost a job in a county surrounding us. So we have a very high unemployment rate in southeast Kansas, so we're confident we could meet a good portion of their workforce. 1,600 jobs at a pay rate that is higher than both Amazon and Southwire. You would think we could recruit some people to move to our region also to work. You know, we can pull from Tulsa, we can pull from Joplin, we can pull from Wichita, even Kansas City. And if you look at the demographics that Amazon provided us when they left, a lot of their workforce did come from Kansas City, Wichita, Joplin, and Tulsa for their facility, which are very similar in numbers. So we're confident we could pull those numbers again. But ideally, we want them to move to our county. That's how we see the biggest economic impact. So we are working with every entity on what does our housing look like? How fast can we get new housing developed? And we've already had housing developers contact us. I'm sure April at the city has also received those calls. How can we help you build houses? I think I get a call every other day from a developer, very interested in developing new housing in our county now. So we're already seeing a lot of that. I've already responded to two proposals this week for businesses that could be suppliers of theirs, whether it be packaging, it be product, grain, land, whatever it might encompass of people who are wanting to help support this project. So it's been interesting. It's the indirect things that I think we're really going to see the biggest piece of growth. When you think about 150 different farmers that will build, you know, quarter million dollar growhouses, you know, that's a huge economic impact for our region. So it's not just the plant that we're looking at, but we're looking at the farmers. We're working with Kansas Farm Bureau to really get the conversation out there with our farmers to see if they want it. They are going to be the reason why this comes or it doesn't. If they can't get farmers to raise chickens, then that won't work. So that's kind of where we're at right now. So we have a lot of work to get done and we really support all the community support on this project. We know that, you know, just because the plant might go in Coffeyville, it doesn't mean that a lot of the people won't live in Independence. You won't have a lot of farmers that have chicken houses out on their existing farms now to raise some chickens. And one of the things that I've heard from several farmers in this region is the contracted price that you get with Tyson. So, you know, if your commodity prices, everyone has, suddenly has a great corn crop, the commodity prices might tank. So you don't get as much per bushel as you might with a contracted rate. So it provides some reliability, some stability for our family farmers, which is good. It also provides, you know, some longevity. You know, you have a contract for 10 years. You can plan for infrastructure. You can plan for improvements. You can plan for added employees if you need it. And that's something that if you work in farming, there's not a whole lot of reliability that you can plan on year after year. So it'll be good for our farmers. Environmentally, I can say that I have been contacted by every regulatory agency under the sun to assure me that they have thoroughly vetted this project and we will be doing that quite a bit over the next few months, our particular site, to make sure that everything is in compliance. I know that the facility itself will have its own wastewater treatment facility that is enclosed as part of the plant.
That was a question I was going to ask is about wastewater. That's one of the concerns that I hear.
That was my, that was my first instinct question too. You know, my husband is an environmental engineer and so I'm getting it just as much from him as probably anyone. And once the water's treated at their facility, it'll be treated at the Coffeyville wastewater treatment facility. So it'll be treated twice, so it'll have to meet regulatory requirements at their facility and meet it again at the Coffeyville treatment facility before it's ever discharged. So there's going to be a lot of oversight on those facilities. One thing, sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Oh. I'll start with your questions because I have information galore. It's probably easier if you ask me questions, actually.
First choice, Tongonoxie.
Yes.
And Tongonoxie, the people in Tongonoxie and surrounding areas were really upset about the plant. Are you seeing any of that, people rising up and saying this is a really bad idea?
There's been a few, but honestly, I think I've, I think I have received three phone calls in the negative. It's been overwhelming positive. There, you know, there are a couple of Facebook groups out there, but they don't have a whole lot of followers. And I think that the difference between the culture of Montgomery County and maybe the culture of the Kansas City metro area even is, you know, we're really used to industry. We're very ag-based in rural America. We kind of understand where our food comes from. And maybe, and I wouldn't, not to bash Kansas City, I lived in Kansas City for 13 years. My husband's from Kansas City. But I think we just physically have better access to that understanding based on where we live. And so there's a disconnect with people and where their food comes from and how it's processed and how it gets to the mass markets.
I think what I've heard people concerned about, it's not, it's not that. And, you know, there's, there's both sides, those that have concerns about what it's, the impact, and those that are in favor. Most of the ones that I would say have concerns, it's lack of information. And it's not, I don't think it's been addressed because what they're, they're saying is they're concerned with the impact of schools.
Okay.
And it's because most of the workers in the processing plant don't speak English. So it puts a burden on the school for translators and that. And that's what I see that as we're approaching this, it's a great opportunity in the number of jobs, because you're looking at 1,600 jobs, but the influx is going to be, if the average rate of family is 2.5 persons, we're looking at, you know, over 2,000 people, which is a significant impact when you bring families in. So, you know, during the two months, I think we need to have it addressed for the comfort level is how this is going to be handled.
Yes.
Also, you know, for, for us as a city, you look at that increase, what's it going to do to our water treatment? Because as you put the growers in the rural area, how does that impact rural water districts? So most of them will not take additional meters now, so are we going to have to extend new service lines to accommodate water or how is it, is it going to be onsite water for that? So we need to look as a city, what our output is at our water treatment plant and what our contract with the state is on consumption from the river. Then also, you mentioned Coffeyville treating the wastewater, the increased wastewater too. How's that going to affect us or also the size of the treatment plant? Then for, for increased crime, you know, that much growth that quick, we need to be looking at how we're going to handle additional, are we going to have to add additional patrolmen? Just what's going to happen? I think for the two months ahead, we need to be aggressive in analyzing what it's going to do to us so we can address those questions and then also be prepared, you know, contact the communities where they do have the processing facilities, get information direct from the community so that we can be prepared. It's kind of a multi-faceted exploration that, you know, I see our staff needing to be involved with the other areas too, that, you know, if we know where the concerns are and can address it now, we can bring a lot more people at ease. But then, you know, we've had a lot of changes in the last four years that have come up and information hasn't been accurate in all areas and it's really affected our, our budget. And to go with this opportunity, if we're prepared and they do make the decision, then it's going to be smooth transition.
Absolutely.
And if we just wait and try and address them, we can be behind the cart trying to push it instead of leading the way. So, you know, it's exciting for the region and, you know, it's, if, if it comes, it's going to be great, but we need to be prepared with answers to those questions.
And, and I can answer some of the questions you just asked. I don't have all the answers by any means. Like I said, we'll have two months to really start getting into a lot of the data analysis. We've only known for a week. We have, all four school districts in Montgomery County are part of our task force. They, the individual superintendents and their school boards are doing the analysis on the capacity of what their school district can handle. All four superintendents have reassured me that they have capacity. In fact, this would be amazing for all four school districts in Montgomery County.
Well, Trish, do you think as you get your information together, then news releases to the printed media, you know, through Facebook and different outlets that just keep the public informed of what you're finding out?
Yeah, the plan is that we're going to roll out a weekly newsletter. I'm actually trying to set it up on my website right now, almost like a blog.
Is there a way to come up with some sort of continual update that, like frequently asked questions?
Exactly.
Or, you know, some sort of, so what are the talking points or whatever you want to say?
Yeah.
That are available from what your discovery says?
Right.
As we go through the process?
I mean, there's a lot of analysis that has to be done. I just got off the phone before I came up here with the Center for Economic Development and Business Research out of Wichita State University. They're going to help us do the financial analysis for if this comes in, how many people do they think will actually live here? How many people will buy houses? How many people will rent houses? How much sales tax will that generate? What about these grow houses? You know, what, what will the sales tax generate from those? What will the property tax generate for those? What will the financial impact be? So we're having that done. The school districts are also doing the same thing for, for their school districts. How many ESL teachers do they expect to need? There are resources for them. Green Bush is an excellent resource and they actually were, they, conveniently, right? They, they did provide a letter of support that they have funding and they have the capabilities to help all of our school districts in rolling out an ESL program. Two amazing things, and sometimes I feel like projects like this become kismet because the superintendent of schools in Kany, Blake Vargas, he teaches teachers to be ESL teachers. So we have an expert in our own county on how to train teachers to become ESL providers.
ESL.
English as a second language.
Oh, good.
So any students that come in that, that don't speak English, we already have an instructor that can go into our school districts in this county and do some trainings and help them get caught up. So we can be on top of it about as fast as anyone possibly could. And that's something, when we spoke with leaders in Garden City about this project, that's what they said was most successful. They were able to get in front of this, completely embrace the fact that they're going to be bringing in new workers and suddenly their crime rates dropped, their housing rates boomed. They cannot keep up with the housing market there. Each different culture has formed communities and has a great relationship with law enforcement there. And so if you look at the stats of, of Garden City since the 80s when everything came in and it was, I mean, there was a reason why I said get out of Dodge. It was, it was rough for a while. They turned that around and they embraced it and they have, I think they said, 32 different languages spoke in their schools. I spoke with Craig Correll, Superintendent of Schools in Coffeyville. We already have 32 languages in our school district in Coffeyville. So we already have the resources, it's just scale. So at least when it comes to schools, when it comes to crime, same thing. I mean, one critical piece of this is, you know, what is the state going to do to help our communities if this happens? You know, are we going to be able to be eligible for additional funding for our police departments, our sheriff department to handle the increased risk, perceived risk? There might not be any issues with crime like Garden City sees, but embracing that, creating a culture of understanding and communication will help dramatically with that. But funding will too.
Sometimes just with numbers increase.
Right.
It's not the people, but it's just numbers.
Right.
That.
So there's a lot of different components that go into this and we are trying to address them as fast as they're coming in. I cannot encourage anyone enough to please reach out to me, send me an email with your questions, with your concerns. I will work as hard as I can to get those questions answered if I can.
And if we have people that are bringing up questions, you would be the one?
Yes.
To direct, direct.
Yes. I'm the primary point of contact on this project for the county. So, you know, Kendall Francis is also a good source. We have hired someone with an agriculture, economic, economics background and marketing background. So she, and she's a rancher, so she knows this industry fairly well and so she can help us understand that aspect of, of this project too. So, but yeah, I'm the primary point of contact. My phone number at MAC is 620-331-3830 and my email address is T Purdon, P U R D O N, at actioncouncil.com.
Can you do a press release or something that has that information?
The press release we put out last week should have that information in it, but you can always go to our website, actioncouncil.com and all of my information's out there. I am working on setting up the blog, which will have regular information, frequently asked questions as we're getting it. So I just got seven different packets of information from the state of Kansas to help get that started and so I still have to get through it before I can get it all out there, but.
Trish, if we got the news in mid-January that we were selected?
Mm-hmm.
When would the plant come online?
So it'll take probably a year to, to build. I think they, they planned on late 2019 to be in full operation with all, all the growhouses. Ideally, they would make their decision, do their due diligence on the site, which typically takes 90 days. It's a, so, and then we would have, you know, probably a month or two of dirt work, planning, construction, and six to 12 months, depending on how the weather and everything goes like that. So ideally, it would be great if we could say, you know, summer of 2019, but most likely, I think the goal is January 1 of 2020.
So two years, really?
Yeah, from, from today, it'll probably take that long.
From the decision to be online.
Right. I mean, ideally, everything will happen simultaneously and the growhouses will be built simultaneously, but I'm guessing they'll probably have to ship some, some in while we're, while we're building. So it'll be a time-consuming process. It'll also be a lot of local labor, hopefully, in the construction phase too, so.
Great. Last time I heard you speak, you mentioned that there were several prospects considering the county. Is that still the case?
Yeah, we did find out the, the one that was even bigger than this one, we, we didn't make it. We did make the top 10 though, in the whole country. So that's huge for us. I think they're coming close to making an official announcement where it's going to go, but we at least made the top 10, which I think is a huge accomplishment for our area. That one would have been well over these numbers. But we have, just last week, I submitted seven proposals for sites around the county. I have another one that's due Friday. So we have, I think I have about 12 different proposals currently pending that are being considered by companies right now for Montgomery County sites and buildings.
That's great.
And then we also have the ones that have been pending for a long time that we're in negotiations on, on existing buildings and just aren't finalized. But we did have our groundbreaking of our newest industry to Montgomery County, which I was very excited to have. So I know they came over to Matt Cor yesterday to talk to them. So, you know, it's, it's something that our industries wanted and needed and we've, we've had excellent feedback from our, from our current industries that they're excited to have a full-fledged paint facility that can do pretty much any kind of paint that we need except for aerospace right now. Now that's, we might be able to get aerospace. We're going to keep working on them, so.
Great.
Any other questions?
It's exciting with the other proposals. It just kind of extends, you know, our need to look into the future of where our infrastructure is and that we're prepared with our services of water, wastewater, streets and roads.
I mean, I'd say that, I know I've, I submitted the West Laurel Industrial Park and the south, the south airport industrial park on a couple of proposals recently. The infrastructure there is, is good, especially at the airport site. The GIS information that's for the West Laurel Park needs some updates. We need some help on, on GIS information for sure. I'm working with Westar and Atmos Energy to create kind of a collaborative GIS system, especially for those two sites, so that when we get an RFP, like the one I just got today, it's due on Friday, I need to be able to turn those around in 24 hours. So when I have something like Tyson going on and every minute of every single day is booked solid, I need to be able to put those together on my phone basically at 8:00 PM at night and the only way I can do that is if we have all the data already completed. So I actually had a proposal two weeks ago that they gave me three hours to submit. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty, it can be pretty intense.
Okay. Well, we need to approve the official statement from the.
Garrett. I got it.
Yeah, from the City of Independence. So I would move then that we approve the official statement of support for the Tyson Food, Tyson Foods Poultry Processing Plant that may locate in Montgomery County and the city of Coffeyville.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your work, Trish.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Great stuff.
I'll keep you all updated as I.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Hang on. The item C is to consider a request from Netflix to authorize the use of 401 North Pennsylvania Avenue for musical performances during the Neo Wala Festival and for the mayor to sign location agreements for filming activities at 401 North Penn Riverside Park and Ralph Mitchell Zoo. Okay, is that?
Yeah, I mean, if you have any questions, but basically, you know, the production company for Netflix is here and they're doing their story on ICC and one of the storylines they're following, I guess, is a rap, a student does rap, and they want to film on 401 North Penn and that's one of the sites they want approval for. And then they also want to film in Riverside Park and at the zoo. And we have, Jeff has looked at the agreements and.
Yeah, so Jeff, Jeff's had a chance to review those location agreements.
And have made some changes and they've accepted the changes and so we're good to go.
So we're good?
Yeah, it's the same agreement they presented to the school district regarding the stadium. So I made some changes. They've signed it already. It's good.
Is it the county or country? Yeah, it's the one where they're going to make it into a national park here.
Right.
Okay, other questions?
No.
Okay. Entertained a motion then that we approve the request from Netflix to authorize the use of 401 North Pennsylvania Avenue for musical performances during Neo Wala and to sign, have the mayor sign, location agreements for filming the activities at 401 North Penn Riverside Park and Ralph Mitchell Zoo. I'd make that a motion, so we're going to have to go through that again. Would it be a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item D is consider authorizing the mayor to sign the inter-local agreement for the North Penn revitalization plan and plans as modified by Montgomery County.
I will let Kelly explain this one to you. She's been working on it for more than one.
We went to the county commission this week and they made some minor changes to the plan. They really had to do with changing where, which county department the payments were made to, changing the, the name of the processing fee and just stating that they would retain it. It was very minor changes, but I just wanted you guys. It was very minor changes, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of that because it was a little bit different than what you approved. And then I have appointments with ICC and the school board to go to their next meetings and present this for their approval to sign the interlocal agreement, and then it goes to the attorney general for their signature. So moving right along.
Should we wait till the school and ICC approve the interlocal and we can approve them all at once?
I, I was just going ahead and approving-
Individually?
Yeah, I would suggest going ahead and approving the changes the county made because actually you already approved it, but then they made some more changes. I don't anticipate that the school and ICC are going to change it. The things the county made changes because they actually processed the applications and they're involved in it, and they administer the program, and those other two entities do not. So I can't see what they would change.
With the interlocal agreement, is there an interlocal agreement between each party? Or is it just one, we're all consenting together?
Whatever.
Just one? So are you wanting us to authorize the, the modifications?
Yes.
Okay. And not actually the signing of the interlocal? Because that will be done after the other two parties sign?
Actually, you've already authorized the signing of the interlocal, but that was based on the other plans, so I just need approval for that plan to be modified per the county.
Okay. Then I'll make the motion that we approve the modifications to the interlocal agreement as presented by Montgomery County Commission, and also then authorize the signing of the interlocal agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. And we approve the, the agreement, basically, with the changes by the county. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Commission comments? Here. About tonight? I don't have any notices of public comments.
No, we're going to do that.
Executive sessions, we do have two. We would have one attorney-client executive session. You said five minutes for that one? Okay. Is that correct? Five minutes? Okay. So do we have to do these separately? Come back into open session? I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with the city attorney regarding the legal issue pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception for KSA 75-4319-B-2. The open meeting will resume back here at 6:08.
Yep.
6:08. At 6:08, here in the veterans' room. Would there be a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're ready to go.
Will be for non-elected personnel? Will it do? It'll be for 20 minutes.
I move we recess for an executive session for discussion of employees' performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75-4319-sub-B-sub-1, for 20 minutes. So we would resume.
I got you. 6:29.
6:29.
Good.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll be back in session. Would entertain a motion then that we adjourn.
So moved.
Head downtown and get something to eat.
Okay.
So it's been moved, seconded.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Get our papers signed, and I'm hungry.